Good afternoon. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called order. Before I continue with my remarks, I'd just like to introduce firstly our panel. On my far left is Ms. Phia Ruddock. On my immediate left is Ms. Laura Alderson. On my near right is Mr. Rick Ross, and on my far right is Mr. Bill Dalton. And I'm Don Taylor. I'll be chairing this afternoon's meeting. We also have with us our Deputy Secretary of Treasur, Ms. Barb Bartosik, at the far-left end of this desk. And in front of us, we have our support staff. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. We acknowledge that the land we're meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudnashone, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you're called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use ShareScreen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body, T-Lab, will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Our hearing procedure is that I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of today's hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the presentation. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application, if substantially revised, to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then, individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room, and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will be then taken into committee for a decision. I would ask firstly of the panel, are there any declarations of interest on any items in this afternoon's agenda? Staff, I ask the same question. Any declarations of interest to report? No. Madam Deputy Secretary of Treasur, have you received any requests for deferral? Thank you. And Madam Deputy Secretary of Treasur, are there any files to be closed this afternoon? Okay, thank you. So we can now proceed with the afternoon agenda, starting with item number eighteen, ninety-one James Street. We have one agency condition, that from Urban Forestry, who is requesting condition number one. We have no other correspondence on this application. And we have an agent, Cale Vanderveen, who apparently is in person. Mr. Vanderveen? I understand you sent in a presentation a day or two, I guess a couple of days ago. I'm wondering if you could make that presentation for both this application and number nineteen, which is the neighboring property?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's great. So carry on then. Give us your address, please.
Yep. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is Cale Vanderveen from Bowsfields, Inc., and I am a registered professional planner and agent for both eighty-nine and ninety-one James Street. Would you like me to proceed with my presentation? Next slide, please. The subject sites are located on the south side of James Street, between fortieth and forty-first street. The sites are currently occupied by two detached dwellings, the blue and the white houses you can see in the image. We are proposing to demolish both properties and replace them with two new detached dwellings. I do want to highlight, there is a small tree you can see on the left side of the image that I'll be discussing, just for information. Next slide, please.
Sorry, which property is eighty-nine and which is?
Eighty-nine is the blue home, and ninety-one is the white.
Okay.
Yes. As a matter of background on the file, prior to Bowsfields being retained, the applicant originally filed a minor variance application on both properties in 2021, requesting four variances, which was ultimately denied by the committee. The application was subsequently appealed to the T-Lab, where mediation occurred, reducing the number of variances from four to one, and where outstanding Urban Forestry and planning comments at the time were resolved. Continued opposition from other involved parties, particularly the Long Branch Neighborhood Association and the adjacent landowner at ninety-three James Street, led the applicant to withdraw the appeals at the time. In August of 2024, the applicant retained Bowsfields to submit new variance applications. We subsequently met with the LBNA and the adjacent landowner to identify their outstanding concerns. This application represents those efforts and includes revisions to address them. Next slide, please. The revised development consists of two detached dwellings of approximately fifteen hundred square feet each, with three bedrooms and an enclosed garage. The revised development meets all provisions of the zoning bylaw, including height, building depth, and minimum setbacks, with the exception of maximum floor space index. Next slide, please. As a result, we are requesting a variance to increase the maximum floor space index from point zero, sorry, from point three-five to point five-zero-three. Next slide, please. Following our applications, Urban Forestry issued a recommendation of denial for eighty-nine James Street on the basis of a proposed tree removal on James Street. Following Urban Forestry's comments, receipt of Urban Forestry's comments, it was brought to my attention by the applicant that the tree was in fact proposed to be removed as a result of previous T-Lab mediation efforts, and that it had been identified for removal in this application in error. You can see on the screen the tree preservation plan that was prepared during mediation that shows the tree retained with the proposed hoarding in purple. I welcome Urban Forestry's proposed condition of filing a tree permit to secure the proposed tree protections prior to construction. Next slide, please. With regards to the requested variance, the proposed increased FSI would support the construction of a relatively modest-sized dwelling of fifteen hundred square feet that is largely the result of existing legal non-conforming lot sizes, which are smaller than the minimum contemplated in the zoning bylaw currently. Farther, the proposed FSI is below that of many recent approvals in the immediate neighborhood, including those sites identified on the slide, with approved densities generally varying between zero-point-six-five and zero-point-seven-two. The proposed development continues to meet all other zoning requirements, including setbacks and building depth. Next slide, please. During our discussions with the adjacent landowner and the Long Branch Neighborhood Association, the primary concern regarding the proposed building was the building depth. As a result, we revised the application to shorten the buildings by one foot from the previous plans last presented during T-Lab mediation. The proposed dwellings at a length of fourteen-point-four-five meters, remain well below the zoning maximum of seventeen meters, are shorter than the immediate adjacent building at eighty-seven James Street, are proposed to incorporate a cedar hedge to mitigate visual impacts on ninety-three James Street, include a one-meter step back on the second floor to farther reduce visual impacts, and will have no windows on the east and west elevations to minimize overlook concerns. Next slide, please. On that basis, and as detailed in the planning letter I submitted to the committee, it is my opinion that the development meets the four tests of the Planning Act and should be approved. I welcome any questions the committee may have.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderveen. Panel, any questions or comments?
The cedar hedge you mentioned, is that coming, or it's there now?
It's not currently there. It will be planted as a part of the project, yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a comment. I was actually on the panel that refused this application in 2021. And in your opinion, what was the most egregious issue? Do you remember?
I was not retained at the time. The client retained us this year, so I was not...
That's not in your notes.
Yeah.
Because I should remember, but I don't.
Sorry, I can't.
Anyway, I just wanted to know what the big issue was at that time. But I appreciate that you've worked very closely with the community and with community planning as well.
Okay, Camille or Adam, is there anyone in the room or online to speak to this application and the next one?
No, Mr. Chair.
So on the site history slide, you note T-Lab mediation 2022 reduced variances from four to one. So I assume the one remaining is the one you're seeking today, right?
Exactly, correct, yes.
Okay, so we have no speakers. Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Vanderveen. I think we can, we'll make two decisions on this. We've had a presentation for two applications, eighteen and nineteen. But we'll do a motion firstly for application eighteen ninety-one James, James Street, and we do have Urban Forestry condition one.
Since I was one of the ones that refused it in 2021, I'm happy to make a motion for approval. And again, I appreciate the fact that you've worked very collaboratively with the community and also with community planning. So, subject to Urban Forestry number one, I move for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson.
I was on that panel, so I was...
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. No in favor? That's unanimously approved. So now we can turn our minds to application number nineteen. We've heard a presentation. The only difference between this and the previous one is that Urban Forestry recommended firstly refusal, but then offered us an alternative to impose their condition number one for a city-owned tree. So before we go into committee, are there any last comments or conditions?
But there was, you did bring this up during your presentation, that it was erroneously identified as a tree.
That's correct, yeah. We identified it for a removal in error. It is proposed to be retained, yes.
Nevertheless, would you be okay with Urban Forestry condition number one?
That's fine, yes, I welcome that, yes.
We usually do that, because notwithstanding what you said, this is the official record of what we have, and...
Absolutely.
Not that we don't believe you, but if you can just deal with Urban Forestry, it should be a quick favorable meeting.
So since I have my microphone on, unless somebody has any questions, I'm happy to make a motion for approval. I believe this application, as well as the last application, meets the four tests under the Planning Act and move for approval, subject to Urban Forestry condition number one.
I'll second that.
Mr. Dalton, thank you. All in favor? Okay, item number nineteen is approved as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderveen. Moving to item number twenty, forty-two Highgate Road. The purpose of the application is to construct a rear two-story addition to the existing dwelling, a second-story addition above the existing attached garage, a covered front porch, and a covered deck in the rear yard. There are seven variances. We have, Urban Forestry has requested their condition two. We have a MetroLinks advisory, and we have two letters of support. The listed agent is Marco Razolini. Mr. Razolini?
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the committee. My name is Marco Razolini from Socora Design, Inc., Twenty Stave Bank Road, Unit 202, Mississauga.
Thank you. Before you speak, sir, could I just ask my panel colleagues if anyone is interested in a full presentation from you? No? Yeah, we're satisfied that this is a very straightforward application, and we don't really feel a need for you to present to us. Would you be okay with not presenting, but perhaps entertaining any questions we may have?
Yes, that works for me.
That's good. Okay. So, panel, questions, comments? Camille, anybody at home?
No, Mr. Chair.
Ms... Sorry, ma'am, why are you here? Which item?
Um, for thirty Lime Rick Avenue.
Limerick. The next one.
Oh, you call it, it's Lime Rick. I would have called it Limerick.
I would have called it Limerick, too.
I'll call it Lime Rick.
I do have one question of the applicant for forty-two Highgate. Are you aware of the MetroLinks advisory?
Yes.
And you're okay?
Yeah, I think it's just an advisory condition.
It is just an advisory. I just wanted to make sure you were aware of it, now you'd read it. And also, you're okay with Urban Forestry condition number two? Is that correct?
Yes, we're okay with, yep, we're okay with Urban Forestry number two.
In that case, seeing no other questions, I'm prepared to make a motion for approval. I believe it meets the four tests under the Planning Act and move for approval, subject to Urban Forestry condition number two.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson. Is there a second for Ms. Alderson's motion?
I'll second that.
Sorry, Rick. Mr. Dalton, Mr. Dalton, thank you. All in favor? That's approved unanimously.
Thank you. Have a great...
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number twenty-one is thirty Lime Rick Avenue. Purpose is to construct a one-story side addition, including an attached garage and a second story above the existing dwelling. We have five variances. We have a community planning condition, and it's a revised application that we're dealing with. I presume you are Orianna Nanoa?
Correct.
Okay, this is pretty straightforward, but since you're here, if you could make a brief presentation to us?
Yep, absolutely. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of committee. My name is Orianna Nanoa, Planner at Design Plan Services, Inc., located at eighty-seven Skyway Avenue, Suite 200, Toronto. I'm the planner here on behalf of the property owner. Happy to provide a presentation. But before I do so, I would just like to note that we would like to verbally amend three variances. So if I may speak to those variances, that would be appreciated. We would seek to reduce the building length from eighteen-point-three-five meters to seventeen-point-six-one meters, reducing the driveway width variance from five-point-eight-eight meters to five-point-six-six meters, and lastly, reducing the coverage from thirty-one percent to thirty-point-two percent. To provide an explanation, an error was identified in the public notice as it pertains to the building length, coverage, and driveway width. Firstly, the proposed building length was identified as eighteen-point-five-three on the public notice. That's dated January twenty-seventh, 2025. Whereas, the zoning waiver identified the building length as eighteen-point-three-five meters. The actual proposed building length is seventeen-point-six-one meters as per the site plan for the plans that you have within your materials package that are dated January twenty-third, 2024. The driveway width variance of five-point-eight-eight has also been incorrectly identified on the public notice and the zoning waiver. The proposed driveway width is five-point-six-six, as identified on the latest set of plans. In terms of the coverage variance, we are also requesting to reduce the proposed coverage from thirty-one percent, as identified on the waiver and the public notice, to a proposed thirty-point-two percent coverage. So, thereforely, we verbally request an amendment to reduce the building length to seventeen-point-six-one meters, reducing the driveway width variance to five-point-six-six meters, and reducing the coverage variance to thirty-point-two percent. We have also reviewed the planning staff report, and they have raised no concerns with the proposal other than a recommended condition that the approval be tied to the plans as it relates to the building length. We are okay with this condition, and transportation services staff have also not raised any concerns or objections with the proposal. And further, it is our understanding that there are no members of the public in opposition to this proposal. I'm happy to speak to the other variances if the committee sees fit. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Okay.
What is the coverage in square meters?
In square meters, it is... The proposed is one-seventy-eight-point-zero-three.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, normally, as I said in my opening remarks, we don't entertain changes introduced or requested at the hearing. But I think in this case, since all three changes that you wish to make are actually improvements, less impactful than what we have before us, I think we'll allow it and proceed to make a decision.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from Ms. Nanoa?
Yeah, just wanted to make sure. You're saying the date of the drawings were January twenty-third, but I think staff note January twenty-fourth.
Let me just double-check that. The date I have on the set of plans is January twenty-third, 2024.
They have twenty-fourth.
Sorry?
They have January twenty-fourth in their memo. Their February twelfth memo.
Yeah, they do.
Mr. Chair, I can answer that question. It's based on upload date to the AIC.
That's what I was going to say, it could be the...
It's exactly it.
So, but the one and the same, right?
Yeah.
Just checking.
That is correct.
So we don't need to change the wording? Any other questions or comments?
Just to clarify for the record, the notices, the variances listed on our notice match what was on the waiver form submitted. So I'm not sure where you're saying we made an error?
Sorry, say that again?
The waiver we have on file matches the variances before the committee today, before your revisions. So I'm not sure where you're saying we made an error that doesn't match the waiver.
Yeah, so the errors were identified late yesterday. I wasn't the one that signed the waiver. The waiver was signed by the applicant.
So the waiver was incorrect, because at the beginning you said that the notice doesn't match the waiver. But it does.
Yes, that is correct. So the waiver is incorrect.
Whoever submitted the waiver made the mistake. No, our notice wasn't incorrect.
Yeah, that is correct.
Anything else? So then, let's go into committee for a decision. This is, we're deciding on a revised application with further revisions that were articulated today. We're reducing coverage to thirty-point-two percent. That's variance one. Variance four, the request is to reduce to seventeen-point-six-one meters. And variance number five, a reduction to five-point-six-six meters. So that's the matter that we're deciding on. And there is the planning condition. Anybody's ready for a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move a motion. Given the application now as amended, I'll move a motion for approval, because you have approved it, so thank you. And with that, I move a motion for approval, because I believe it meets the four tests, subject to the February nineteenth planning conditions. Condition, there's only one.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Is there a second for Mr. Dalton's motion? Mr. Ross, thank you very much. All in favor?
Sorry, I don't see a planning condition. Or is it in the additional? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it's actually dated February twelfth. Yours doesn't say February twelfth, Donna? The planning memo? Okay, you said the nineteen.
So once again, all in favor? That's unanimously approved. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number twenty-two, two-five-oh-two Lake Shore Boulevard West. Purpose is to construct a new fourplex. This is a revised application. There are two variances. One for front yard setback, and one for south side yard setback. We have a planning condition requested. We have a support letter. And we have Urban Forestry requesting conditions two and three. The agent is Leo Mastrandria. Leo, are you online?
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Leo Mastrandria. I am at eight-one-seven Cosburn Avenue, and I'm the agent for twenty-five-oh-two Lake Shore Boulevard.
Okay, panel, are we in need of a presentation on this? Oh, yeah. Firstly, sir, the panel has agreed that we do not need a full presentation. However, we have at least one question. Would you be prepared to proceed that way? Just answering questions?
Yes.
Okay, let's do that, then. Ms. Alderson?
So, the building that is directly beside your property, you're the agent. So twenty-five-oh-four looks to be a fourplex or a triplex. Can you tell me what it is? The building that is immediately beside...
I believe it is a fourplex. It is very similar in nature.
Right.
And we did have a meeting with the other side at twenty-five-hundred, and we have agreed to frost, put some privacy screening and frost some of the windows on that side of the twenty-five-hundred, which are also in the revised drawings which we submitted.
Okay. And you have one letter of support from the immediate neighbor, so I'm assuming that's the other side, so it's not twenty-five-oh-four, it's the other side, it would be twenty-five-hundred.
That's twenty-five-hundred, the smaller one.
Twenty-five-hundred, right, the smaller one. Okay, thank you very much.
And I have a couple of questions. Could you just explain why, in fact, that you need these variances? Why can you not build in accordance with the zoning bylaw requirements for the front yard and the side yard setbacks, south side?
Well, the side yard was existing, so we decided to try to keep that wall, so that we may not have to shore at that building. And then, we also kept the front wall as well, to give us a little bit more room for the rear yard.
But the front wall of the existing house does not remain? You're extending it like a meter and a half closer to the street, is that right?
Yes, we're keeping it in line with the adjacent dwelling at twenty-five-oh-four.
Yeah, I see that it extends out, yeah, okay. Any other questions or comments? Camille, anybody at home wants to talk about this one?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so then, let's make a decision. Urban Forestry conditions two and three, and it's a revised application, and there's a planning condition.
I'll move a motion for approval. Again, this application is very straightforward. I believe it meets the four tests, subject to the February seventh, 2025, planning memo and February thirteenth forestry memo, conditions.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton and Ms. Alderson. All in favor? That application is approved unanimously. Our final item of the day is number twenty-three, Eight Edgeware Drive. I'm looking at the clock, and it's only one-thirty-four PM. So I think to get our money's worth, we should spend three or four hours on this one, if that's okay, if that's okay with everyone?
Can't wait back the time?
Purpose is to construct a two-story rear addition. There's one variance. We have Urban Forestry condition two, and we have a MetroLinks advisory. Camille, does anyone at home wish to speak to this item?
No, Mr. Chair.
Panel, does anyone desire us of a presentation?
Not really, but I do have a comment, because I have here my notes. MetroLinks advisory is different from the usual one, and I don't know why I wrote that, but it must have been an uncommon thing. I'll pull it up.
In the meantime, Mr. Prospero, are you online?
Mr. Prospero is here speaking from Eight Edgeware Drive right now.
Okay, you've been listening in to start here?
Yes.
Yeah, so you know, we're just looking at this MetroLinks advisory.
Yeah, and I don't know if I'm okay with the three-to-four hour extension, but if you need to do it, we could do that.
Okay, how about five minutes?
Five and a half.
Okay, done. Are you okay with the Urban Forestry condition two?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so let's just settle this Metrothink.
And have you read the MetroLinks advisory? It's something that I, we don't normally see, this particular one, so I'm just wondering if you've read it.
Yeah, I've read it, yeah. It's just basically a note from the Community Engagement Advisor that we've been dealing with. We're having a lot of construction on our street right now from MetroLinks, and this was kind of, we had asked her for a support letter, and this is what she provided us.
Okay, so this is more or less a support letter, that's why it looks different?
Basically, yes.
Okay.
So, okay?
It's coming.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then, let's make a decision.
Okay, then I'd like to move a motion for approval. I believe the application is very straightforward and meets the four tests, subject to February thirteenth, 2025, forestry memorandum containing condition number two.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Is there a second or for Mr. Dalton?
I'll second that.
Ms. Riddick, thank you. All in favor? That application is approved. Oh, Sophia, you seconded it, so I guess that means your hands up. Okay, that's good. Unanimously approved, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So that ends our day. I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
Well, that's my favorite motion.
All in favor? We are adjourned at one-thirty-seven PM. Thank you, panel, thank you, staff, thank you, Ms. Bartoszak. Pleasure working with all of you.
Yes.
See you next time.